Good evening, the section of board meeting for the United Board of Education is called to order. This evening we are streaming with the theater Stillwell School of Arts, Mr. Peyton Horstman, that has agreed on his athletic religious supply. So thank you, people, and we will say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sometimes she's bitter when she's doing things she hasn't done yet. Board members of the board, with board policy meetings, we need every board member to avoid conflicts in areas where parents have such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict with their parents or such conflict with respect to any others? Do you have a board meeting or if there are one or more board members? So we don't have a conflict or appearance conflict and referring to participation in the board meeting. We do have some recognition for this.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Beasley. I was with him, damn.
I'm a whole new contract.
Can we start this again? Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Beasley, the kind of generous Superintendent Beasley. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we do have some very special young people to recognize. Before we begin, I would like to ask Dr. Robinson from Stillwell and Dr. Shaw from Link Scholars if they've joined the board members and superintendent at the front. I would also like to invite Kristy Keith, who is our special person when it comes to everything gifted for the district with huge units up front as well. I would like to invite the students that we're going to recognize that they would line up along the floor wall. And then we will begin. The Georgia Governors Honors Program is a residential summer program for gifted and talented high school students who will be rising juniors and seniors during the program. It offers instruction designed to provide students with academic, cultural, and social enrichment necessary to become the next generation of global critical thinkers, innovators, and leaders. Clayton County Public Schools is proud to state that it has nine participants for the 2018 program. Because we do have students from all of the state participating, and so we left our mark. I ask that they come for when their names are called. Please remain up until all the names have been called for the students who are here. Now, we do have students that are engaged in a lot of incredible things, and some of them could not be here tonight, but we think it's important for them to, for their name to be heard. Our first student we're recognizing is from Link Scholars Academy. It's a world languages area, is what, she attended this program within, and it is Corey Benson. Oh, and it was in Latin, world languages Latin. Our next student is from Luthwick High School, who attended the Governor's Honors Program for World Languages Chinese, and the student is Karen Watson. Our next student, who is, who is here tonight, is a student at Stillwell School of Arts and attended the Governor's Honors Program in the area of science. And his name is Peyton Horstman. The other students who participated in this program represent Clayton County are Michael Padala of Stillwell in the area of visual arts, Jordan Ademaju in the area of visual arts, Kendall Brown in the area of dance, Marcus Johnson in the area of theater performance, Cardell Smart in the area of music voice tenor, excuse me, and Cindy Williams in the area of theater performance. All of the students I just mentioned are from Stillwell School of Arts. Corey, I would ask that parents stand, and I think we're off standing right now.
Alright, everyone, if you look up here on the count of three. One, two, and three. Gonna hold for one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
We say.
Good evening, Mr. White. I want to do have someone sign out of the board of education to follow. In order to have a vision of greater support for citizens who need assistance, we should work on the county of education. Yes, the last week we were aware of all the guidelines. Our type of board education needs a video and audio tape in order to ensure fairness and accuracy. Board members cannot respond to this meeting in comments from speakers, however, if they share, it should all come in as corporate. Issues requiring possible action, not only any other to a future agenda, issues that may need to be addressed by the school system administration, they need to be noted. A use of language and personal attacks on school board members, the system employees, or other citizens will not be permitted. All speakers must adhere to the district's stability policy and other rules as needed. In compliance with state statutes, management personnel will not be assessed publicly in the annual integrity session for board education. After all, administration shall have its own. Only speakers who sign up for this public participation session will be allowed to speak. We ask that none of those says, before speaking, time and how to feel that wants to be for Charles White will be entitled to these before three minutes. He asks that speakers to appear at this time limit and decide on how to call. Mr. White, please, before the turn is up, and our only speaker this evening is my mother, Wallace.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Donna Robbins, and I am the Director of Benefits and Special Programs for the Federation of Service Employees. I'm here this evening on behalf of the new bishop, who's our executive director, who had a compliment to speak to my LA PS board meeting. I'd like to thank board members Jesse Glory and Victoria Williams for joining us at our recent APF Great Vates Reception. I've also been working with Miss Inneser Gray to facilitate efforts to get students from Clayton County to participate in this program for next year's contest. I want to also thank the CFO for working to our not the business unit to pay for productions and the project with Miss Beasley in carrying out our vision to support this history. Finally, we've worked with the Veterans of Board Affairs on a new program that gives out over $2 million yearly to scholarships for students for this type funding. And we want also to take the county into this process. So we've got to be sort of follow up communication to you all. So we develop a little prayer early in the process on what that program is about and how to look which to expect it and eligible to participate in this program. We want to give official information of a charter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. We do have public officials here supporting her, so we'll do that.
Good evening. I would like to recognize all public officials who attend our meetings. And tonight we have, have us Pastor J. Charles from the United Christian Fellowship. Would you please stand to be recognized? Thank you. And also, if there are any other public officials that might have missed tonight, please stand to be recognized at this time. Say no, thank you.
I think we made up school board elect for our judges.
Thank you.
Board members, I think most of you have agreed that we do not need an executive session this evening, but we do need to take action on the materials that we receive before you have a hearing. It's hearing 2018, 2019, HCO wants to please your pleasure regarding the year. English, Miss Baker.
I'm going to accept the recommendation of the president.
It's Corey.
I say no, Ms. Davis.
And board members, if you'd like your pleasure. And we wish you happiness, thank you so much. And that was the only recommendation we had on the executive sessions, Corey, for our announcements.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of September. The Women of Clayton County, in partnership with Clayton County Public Schools, will present awards to recognize our Clayton Reed Southern Reading Stars on Thursday, September 6th, at 6:00 p.m. at the District's Performing Arts Center. Two students, one to each school, will be recognized as Clayton Reed Southern Reading Star. The recognition will be for the highest number of books read and for reading improvement. Schools throughout the district will conduct open house curriculum nights for them September. Early, excuse me, elementary schools will hold their open house events on Thursday, September 13th. Middle schools will hold their open house events on Thursday, September 20th. And high schools will host their open house events on Thursday night, September 27th. All open house curriculum nights will be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Open house sessions are likely more in-depth visits for parents, guardians, and caregivers. The district will observe the spending Heritage Month, beginning September 15th, and continuing through Monday, October 15th. On Saturday, September 15th, the District's Pre-K Department will sponsor its annual Pre-K Curriculum Fair. This curriculum event will take place at Mount Zion Primary School from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event will feature an exciting day of games, prizes, snacks, instructional resources, and lots of fun while learning. Superintendent Dr. Morsi J. Beasley will host a second in series of Critical Conversations meetings on Tuesday, September 18th, at the South Clayton Recreation Center at 18:37 McDonald Road in Happy Joy. The meeting is scheduled to begin at 6:00 p.m. It's designed to provide stakeholders an opportunity to gain information regarding priorities for the current school year. Those attending will be able to engage with the superintendent and members of the district leadership to learn more about the school district's goals and expectations. The District Career, Technical, Agricultural, Education Department is sponsoring a Work-Based Icon 2018 at Clayton State University on Thursday, September 20th. More than 200 juniors and seniors from all the district's high schools will have opportunity to prepare for their careers before and after high school. Parents are invited to attend a school choice magnet fair on Saturday, September 22nd, at the Andrew K. Cattie Professional Learning Center. The event, which will begin at 9:00 a.m., will provide parents, guardians, or caregivers an opportunity to meet with staff members from the district's various magnet schools and career faculties. Parents will also have the opportunity to get an overview of the online application process. Clayton County Public Schools is proud to present a performance of "Buchines, La Buis." The production will be held at the District's Performing Arts Center in Jonesboro on Sunday, September 23rd, at 3:00 p.m. It is beginning stage by the Peach State Opera Company and will feature guest appearances by Stillwell School of Arts students. The September board work session will be held Monday, September 24th, in the boardroom of the Administration Complex. The meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. The first Board of Education Superintendent Retreat of the 2018-2019 school year will take place Saturday, September 29th, at the Professional Learning Center. The retreat is scheduled to begin at 8:30 a.m. And finally, the October board meeting will be held here in the boardroom on Monday, October 1st, at 6:00 p.m. Madam Chair, board members and assistants of Clayton County, this concludes tonight's announcements, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Miss Baker.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to let everyone know that the opera is going to be performed on Weykin Street, Peach State. It includes one of our undergraduates, Rachel Holmes. She graduated from Jonesboro High School, I'm saying a couple years ago. And she has just received her PhD. I'm not sure the exact music theory or whatever it is. But she's one of our alumni, she's glad to share this with us. And I just want to give her those, she was first through 12th grade, Clayton County Jonesboro High School graduate. So I just thank her for all that she's done and we've gotten sharing this with our students.
You know, we have lots of students like that, we just don't care about. Board members, we need to consider our minutes for the board work session on July 3rd and the board meeting on August 6th. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes that we set to us? And then let us stand for you, yes, there was a minute.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Our report is very brief on tonight. I'd like to really use the time to share our marketing tool that we'll use this year. I'll commit it to hot on this video that is created by Mark Northworthy Production Company in collaboration with our Communications Department. So the superintendent's report that you see is out on the website. It has some updates about the strategic plan. And also, we've also reshared, if you will, the fine arts information, the dual enrollment and advanced placement information that was already sent to all stakeholders. So at this time, we'd like to share the video. It's our tool to market the successes and the work that's occurring in our school system. And after tonight, our Communications Department will ensure that it's posted on the district's website, the mobile app, all social media platforms, and will be shared via email to all stakeholders. So tonight is you all's first opportunity this evening. My vision is to create a culture of high performance, one in which students achieve natural goals, one in which excellence is the norm, it's not an exception, one in which students, they're just expected to do well. They do well, they participate in various opportunities. One in which teachers teach at very high levels, principals believe at very high levels, staff performs at very high levels. One in which our community decides that we expect our students to do well. It's not an exception, it's just our expectation.
A good school is not just about test scores. It's about what's in the building, having the right books and the seats in those classrooms, making sure that they're there, not just for paycheck, but they're there doing what is best for children.
I'm excited about the vision and visionary of our school district now.
My vision is to put this entire community to embrace what it means to be high performance, whether it be early learning, mathematics, science, STEM, social studies. Our students should just be expected to do well with everything though, whatever grade they're in, whatever the subject is. They're expected to be college and career ready, period. I expect our students to go to work, I expect them to go to college, I expect them to take full advantage of careers, post-secondary options.
So proud of the opportunities that Clayton County School System gives them so that they can work on things that they are proud of.
Everyone's expected to do well, there are no exceptions.
Being committed to high performance takes a bold mindset. That means we know what we want for our students, we're going to give them every single opportunity to achieve at a high level and not necessarily accepting a bare minimum. High performance to me means that we're going to give our students the opportunities to take honors classes, AP classes, to prepare not just for career, quite for college as well. Wherever our students want to go, having that high performance mindset means that they're going to excel in whatever area they choose for themselves.
Our students in Clayton County Public Schools are eager to learn, they want to learn, their parents want them to learn, they come every day hungry for the knowledge. They are future leaders, they are young people, they're coming, the next leaders of our nation.
The leadership here in Clayton County is unique in that we have very experienced educators who have worked in very diverse situations who really understand what it means and what it takes to produce a culture of high performance. We've worked in populations that are challenging, we've worked in populations that were less challenging.
Each and every year, our high schools consistently graduate students that are going to the nation's best colleges into the service academies in our country.
We've been able to see student achievement always improve, consistently improve.
In the past, we did have high performance mindset in pockets of the district. But it has taken the effort of our superintendent in this cabinet and everyone else at district level and our principals to ensure that we have not only high performance in those areas around our district, but every area in our district.
Yes, we have a set of state teachers that tell us what, but beyond what, we have to define how. How do we make them see themselves in the word that we're putting before them so that they can think about their futures? We want our students to be able to not respond to the question of what do we want to do later in life, what problem do we want to solve?
The leadership in Clayton is unique in that we have individuals who really believe in K-10 education. We understand the power of K-10 education. We're all beneficiaries of K-10 education.
Children are achieving. We have a magnet program in our host, each and every one of our schools.
We are all in this together, it takes an entire village to raise. Schools and students, and we must have the support, not only of the staff members, the central office, and schools, but we need our stakeholders, our community members, our parents, because this is what's going to build our future and shape our future leaders. The students that are sitting in our classrooms today are going to be our future doctors, our lawyers, our nurses, or maybe even the President of the United States. Clayton County has what it takes, and it's got to be where we all are in it together, holding hands, and working as a team.
Beginning June, Clayton County Public Schools is our Performing Arts Center. I say that to everybody that I meet, everybody that comes into our facility. They are amazed as to what we have just getting right off of I-75 in Jonesboro, Georgia. It is a phenomenal facility. We do musicals in that facility, we have other organizations come in and display their artistic talents. It's just a very good opportunity for Clayton County to take a hold of the arts in metro Atlanta and show everyone across, not only Georgia, but across this country and this world, what we can do with the arts. What I want people to know about Clayton County Public Schools is that we believe in children. So don't believe everything that you hear, believe what you see. People know that something special is happening here at Clayton County Public Schools.
We believe in our community, we believe in our students, we believe in our teachers, our staff members, we believe in our principals.
Every year, we're growing and changing.
With the efforts of my teachers, my fellow students, and my community, I'm ready to take on more.
We fundamentally believe that our core, that our community deserves excellence.
And every year, we're raising the bar.
Anytime, anything is new, everybody is apprehensive, it's the phenomenon, they don't know what to say. Working with Dr. Beasley and his cabinet and leadership in our district, it's been something that we have been longing for, something that our district needed, but fresh here.
The impact of this leadership has been one of professional growth. Dr. Beasley and his team have really worked to grow the leaders.
I've been here twenty-two years, and I've never seen such collaboration and cohesiveness.
But you can't improve the pedigree of school if you don't improve the pedigree of the people that lead the school. So I really appreciate the opportunity to learn and to grow in who I am as a leader.
With Dr. Beasley, he's that one that is supportive. He's been the one that says, this is your school, you know what you need to do. I want you to run them well, and I want you to do what's best for children, make sure that Clayton County continues to be that best asset on the south side of Atlanta.
And we're going to continue to strive to focus on student achievement and do what we're supposed to do for our children.
I've had the privilege of working with our students in our county for the last 25 years.
What's the biggest difference this year from last year and years past? We are focused on not just a commitment to high performance, but a commitment to ensuring that our students, when they leave Clayton County, they will be prepared to compete truly in a globally competitive environment. Not only have we established partnerships with our local business leaders, the community leaders, we have embraced the interest of business partners outside of our district.
The Clayton County Chamber of Commerce has committed to act towards our school history and will partner anywhere we can with schools and businesses to make sure that that happens.
We are strategically located to be one of the most thriving communities in the city. Their tropical subland alliance is leading on development partner who focuses on regional approach to development. We've partnered with Dr. Morrison Beasley, who now leads our education collective, that now really focus on all the many opportunities that exist within the region and how we can properly position Clayton County Public Schools to succeed.
Education is the most important aspect of economic development. We have the world business airport, we have four interstate highways, one of the most great locations you can have in this world. We have a flexible and strong education system for our students for the future.
Understanding that our position is a global gateway to opportunity.
Clayton County is a gem of sound science city, and it's a force to be reckoned with. Creating a culture of high performance is the pulse that's driving the revitalization of our school district and our community.
I had to do it quite a bit in, 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 not too long of a time period, it was about eleven or so minutes, but, uh, it keeps you engaged, it really wants, it motivates you to want to know more about the school system. And so, J's team will blast us out on all platforms, and we're encouraged for parents to share with other people, it's about rewriting narrative. We get the story that people, we like people to talk about our school system, and so, this is just one of many that we'll do, it's the first one, but we just wanted everyone to see, and, uh, for the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Gory.
Uh, yes, I believe that we need to let them also know, uh, Mr. Norris, we're talking to a graduate of Lovejoy.
I did, but it's over a little bit.
Yes, he's, um, Lovejoy High School.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Gory. Board members, we need to consider our consent agenda, which includes the purchasing of our financials, the legislative projects, plus construction of the, the resolution providing for eighteen, I want to play applications, I want to play credit applications, the removal and disposal of the special students loan for our high schools, the termination of qualifications, for high school, calendar change, personnel changes, for medical science bank, for early college bank, for community schools. We discussed all these at our last meeting, I know that we weren't talking about all these, but the little boys opened the motion, is there anything?
No.
Make a motion for a free consent.
Yes.
I said the motion. Board members, you can vote for Clayton County. And the motion passes with several votes in favor and one dissent in support.
I believe by my own confidence, if you have time to look at the names, I'll just kind of stand in the event.
Thank you, Mr. Gory, for the exciting story. Under the business agenda, we have considered for two months to have the policies to be changed, so that the question of whether policies be. Okay?
I'm with the big step of the local board.
Ms. Burrows, on second motion, what members would give your question? And the decision members, thank you so much, we have concluded the agenda, this is.